The 26th Session of the Senate in the first regular session of the 20th Congress is hereby called to order. Senator Ronald de la Rosa will lead the chamber in prayer.
In the name of the Father, of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, Almighty God, we thank you for the gift of service to our nation. Today, we hold on to the promise of the Psalm. God is with us. Help us, Lord, to keep our eyes and hearts fixed on you. Equip us with your courage so that we are not weighed down by corruption, political division, or despair. Strengthen us to proclaim truth, to uphold justice, and above all, to show compassion. Our people now face a loss of trust in their leaders. Grant us wisdom, Father, to craft laws that remind them not of our positions, but only of your presence. May this Senate be a place of light where only your goodness and mercy reign. You, O Lord, are with us. You are with the commuters, the fisher folk, the farmers, the daily wage earners, the youth. You are especially with the lost, the least, and the last. May their calls for justice and cries for help always steer us into action. Give us so that all we do may be reflections of your redeeming love in everything. May there be less of us and more of you. We ask this through Christ our Lord. Amen. And Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit.
The Secretary of State, please call the roll.
Roll call-up members. The honorable Senators Aquino, Senator Cayetano Allen, Senator Cayetano Pia, Senator de la Rosa, Senator Ersito, Senator Escudero, Senator Estrada, Senator Gachalian, Senator Go, Senator Ontiveros, Senator Laxton, Senator Lapin, Senator Legarda, Senator Marcoletta, Senator Marcos, Senator Padilla, Senator Pangilinan, Senator Tulfo Irwin, Senator Tulfo Rafi, Senator Villanueva, Senator Villar Canil, Senator Villar Marc, Senator Zubiri. The Senate President is present.
With eighteen senators present, the Chair declares the presence of a quorum. Majority Leader.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, we have several guests in the gallery before we take up our business for the day. We have with us my guests from my district and town of Dangkagan, Bukidnon. Honorable Mark Vincent Dandasan and his lovely wife, Banegue Councilor Rosalie Dandasan, is with us together with the LGU staff of the municipality of Dangkagan, Bukidnon. We also have with us, Mr. President, guests of Senator Bam Aquino. These are the ECPC Philippines, held by Michael Conan Dimabayo and Reverend Hernandez, as well as Ms. Philippines Earth, Ms. Joy Barcoma, also guest of Senator Bam Aquino. And we have with us, guests of Senator Ontiveros, Ms. Furleen Mata Mostoles, the first runner-up of Ms. Freedom of the World, together with Lady Lindberg Mastoles, and guest of Senator Kiko Pangilinan, Mayor June Sumbo of Malapatan Sarangani. And we also have a guest of the Senate. These are students and faculty of Buipilos Banios, my alma mater. Are they here today? Department of Social Development Services and College of Human Ecology. May we welcome them, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Majority Leader. We'd like to welcome all the guests that were mentioned by our Majority Leader. Welcome to the Senate. Perhaps you would like to introduce the two beauty queens to Senator Sherwin Gachalian.
Actually, that's an ongoing request of his staff, Mr. President, if we can find him a date, because without that, they go home at midnight every night. I do not know if the Labor Department would like to look into that. But yes, Mr. President, kidding aside. Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, move it with his friends with the reading of the Journal of the 25th Session, Monday, September 29. Considered the same as approved, Mr. President.
Any objection? Care is none. Any objection? Chair has none. The motion is approved.
Mr. President, I move that we proceed with the reference of business.
Secretary, you'll proceed with the reference of business.
Bills on First Reading, Senate Number 1399, An Act Upholding the Security of Tenure in Government Service, Granting Permanent Appointment to Qualified Civil Servants Under Cashwell, Contractual, Contract of Service, Job Order, and Under Similar Work Arrangements with the Government, Senator Villar C.
Refer to the Committees on Civil Service and Finance.
Senate Number 1400, An Act Granting Universal Social Pension to Senior Citizens, Amending RA 7432, An Act to Maximize the Contribution of Senior Citizens to Nation Building, Grant Benefits and Special Privileges and For Other Purposes, Senator Villar C.
Refer to the Committees on Social Justice and Finance.
Senate Number 1401, An Act Ensuring the Welfare and Protection of Business Process Outsourcing Workers in the Philippines, Senator Villar C.
Refer to the Committee on Labor.
Senate Number 1402, An Act Prescribing Mandatory Guidelines on the Establishment and Operation of Local Universities and Colleges, Senator Ontiveros.
Refer to the Committees on Higher Education and Local Government.
Senate Number 1403, An Act Providing for a National Framework for Students' Rights and Welfare, Senator Ontiveros.
To the Committees on Higher Education and Basic Education.
Senate Number 1404, An Act Strengthening the Commission on Human Rights as a National Human Rights Institution, Senator Tulfo E.
To the Committees on Justice, Civil Service, and Finance.
Senate Number 1405, An Act Further Amending RA 7277, the Magna Carta for Persons with Disability, as amended, to provide for the lifetime validity of Identification Cards issued to persons with permanent disabilities, Senator Tulfo E.
To the Committee on Social Justice.
Senate Number 1406, An Act Further Amending Republic Act Number 11213, the Tax Amnesty Act, as amended by RA 11569 and RA 11956, by extending the period of availability of the Estate Tax Amnesty until June 14, 2027, and for other purposes, Senator Tulfo E.
Refer to the Committee on Ways and Means.
Senate Number 1407, An Act Mandating the Establishment of Dialysis Centers in All National, Regional, and Provisional Hospitals, Providing Free Dialysis Treatments to Indigent Patients, and Appropriating Funds Therefor, Senator Tulfo E.
To the Committees on Health, Social Justice, and Finance.
Senate Number 1408, An Act Providing for an Across-the-Board Increase in the Basic Monthly Salary of Public School Teachers, and Appropriating Funds Therefor, Senator Tulfo E.
To the Committees on Civil Service, Basic Education, and Finance.
Senate Number 1409, An Act Abolishing the Travel Tax, Senator Tulfo E.
To the Committees on Ways and Means, Tourism, and Finance.
Senate Number 1410, An Act Providing Subsidies for Indigent Public Utility Drivers in the Payment of Fees and Charges for Certificates and Clearances Required by the LTO in Applying for a Professional Driver's License, Senator Tulfo E.
To the Committees on Public Services and Social Justice.
Senate Number 1411, An Act Providing for a System of Redistributing and Recycling Foodways to Promote Food Security, Senator Tulfo E.
To the Committees on Agriculture and Social Justice.
Senate Number 1412, An Act Establishing Public Basic Education Schools in Geographically Isolated and Disadvantaged and Conflict-Affected Areas, Providing Access Roads Leading to Last Mile Schools, Appropriating Funds Therefor, Senator Legarda.
To the Committees on Basic Education and Finance.
Senate Number 1413, An Act Modernizing the TESDA, Amending and Repealing for the Purpose, RA 7796, the TESDA Act of 1994, and for other purposes, Senator Legarda.
To the Committees on Higher Education, Civil Service, and Finance.
Senate Number 1414, An Act Amending RA 8292, the Higher Education Modernization Act of 1997, to strengthen the Governance of State Universities and Colleges by revising the Composition and Powers of the Governing Boards, clarifying the Role of the Commission on Higher Education, and granting differentiated autonomy, and for other purposes, Senator Legarda.
Refer to the Committee on Higher Education.
Senate Number 1415, An Act Prescribing the Mandatory Guidelines for the Establishment and Operation of Local Universities and Colleges, Senator Legarda.
To the Committees on Higher Education and Local Government.
Senate Number 1416, An Act Establishing the University of the Philippines National Climate Resilience Institute, and for other purposes, Senator Legarda.
To the Committees on Higher Education, Environment, and Finance.
Senate Number 1417, An Act Establishing a National Health Service Outreach Program for Senior Citizens with Functional Disabilities, Providing for the Regular Distribution of Assistive Devices, Hygiene Kits, and Community-Based Health Visits, and for other purposes, Senator Ontiveros.
To the Committees on Health, Social Justice, and Finance.
Senate Number 1418, An Act Extending the Term, the Second Congressional Commission on Education, EdCom II, Amending RA 11899, Creating the Education Cabinet Cluster to Support the Implementation of EdCom II Recommendations and for Other Purposes, Senator Ontiveros.
To the Committees on Higher Education, Basic Education, and Finance.
Resolutions, Propose Senate Resolution 133, Expressing the Sense of the Senate, Urging the Executive to Manifest the Philippines' Commitment to Improving the Human Rights Situation in the Region, Particularly in Light of Ongoing Concerns in Myanmar, in accordance with ASEAN Principles and Obligations, Senator Ontiveros.
Refer to the Committee on Rules.
Propose Senate Resolution 134, Directing the appropriate Senate Committee to Conduct an Inquiry into the Delayed Remittance of GSIS Loan Payments and/or Contributions of Public School Teachers and Deaf-Ed Personnel, with the End in View of Enacting Remedial Measures to Ensure Timely Remittance, Accurate Posting of Payments, and the Protection of Teachers and Government Employees from Unjust Interest Charges and penalties, Senator Tulfo E.
To the Committees on Government Corporations and Basic Education.
Resolution 135, Directing the appropriate Senate Committee to Conduct an Inquiry on the Alleged Failure of Casinos to Implement Strict Know-Your-Client Policies and to Report Covered and Suspicious Transactions to the Anti-Money Laundering Council, with the End in View of Strengthening Existing Laws, Imposing Stranger Compliance Mechanisms on Casinos, and Ensuring Accountability in the Use of Public Funds, Senator Tulfo E.
To the Committees on Games and Banks.
Resolution Number 136, Directing the Committee on Health and Demography to Conduct an Inquiry in Aid of Legislation on Reports of Bullying, Harassment, and Abuse of Authority in Hospitals, with the End in View of Ensuring Safe and Helpful Working Conditions for Healthcare Professionals, Senator Tulfo R.
To the Committee on Health.
Resolution Number 137, Directing the Senate Committee on Public Services to Conduct an Inquiry in Aid of Legislation on the Rising Incidents of SIM Card-Related Scams, Including the Use of Fraud and Bank Links that Result in Unauthorized Deductions and Account Hacking, with the End in View to Strengthen Measures That Will Protect the General Public, Senator Tulfo R.
Refer to the Committees on Public Services and Banks. Majority Leader?
Mr. President, we'd like to recognize Senator Francis Kiko Pangilinan to deliver a manifestation.
We recognize Senator Francis Pangilinan.
Maraming salamat, ginoong tagapangulo sa ating mga kasamahan sa Senado. Bilang taxpayer at bilang pasweldo ng taong bayan, medyo nakakaasiwa at nakakabahala ang statement na nilabas ng Land Bank kahapon. And I quote, "Strongly refuting insinuations" sa paghandle nito ng government contractor accounts ng DPWH flood control projects. Ang lumalabas sa ating pagdinig, ginamit ang Land Bank, naglabas ng halos kalating bilyon pisong halaga ng cash sa loob ng dalawang araw, na sa Land Bank mismo winidro ng mga kuntatista. Kung tama ang naging statement ng Land Bank, na wala silang ginawang mali, sumunod sila faithfully and strictly sa lahat ng existing Philippine banking laws and regulations, ang tanong, ibig sabihin ba dahil walang mali sa paglabas ng 457 million pesos cash sa dalawang araw, ay mauulit ito? Pwedeng gawin ulit dahil to quote, "sumunod sila faithfully and strictly sa lahat ng existing Philippine banking laws and regulations." We beg to disagree. Dapat sana ay sinabi nila sa kanilang statement, maghanap kami ng paraan para hindi na mangyari ulit ito. Tandaan po natin, pera ito ng gobyerno, ng taong bayan, pera na kinubra sa kanila o inuutang sa ngalan nila, pera na dapat napupunta sa pagkain, edukasyon, kalusugan, kabuhayan. Hinihiling ko lang sa Land Bank at sa sino mang nagdraft ng statement nila, at sa lahat, sa ating lahat na pinapasweldo ng taong bayan, na magkaroon ng mindset na para sa tao, para sa Pilipino, na ialay ang araw-araw na gawain ang bawat pisong pumapasok at lumalabas sa government banks sa Pilipino, sa mga kababayan natin. Sa gitna ng galit ng ating mga kababayan sa nangyari sa kanilang pondo, maano ba namang magsabi, "We will find ways of doing things better. We will," or "we will review our protocols to be able to flag possible dubious transactions, etc." Imbis na ipagmalaki na sinunod nila ang lahat ng batas, maano ba namang magsabi, "Given our expertise and 62 years of experience in handling government funds, we will help review the laws, particularly on anti-money laundering, and especially if they involve government contractors." Your commitment to the highest standards, itong statement nila, to the highest standards of integrity, regulatory compliance, and public trust demands this. Otherwise, 'yung declaration ay empty, ikanga. It is not enough to do bad. It is not enough to not do bad, brother, but we must not stand idly by while bad is happening or while bad is already being exposed to everyone. Pakiusap po ito, please, Land Bank, let us do better for our people. Salamat, Mr. President, for this manifestation.
Majority Leader?
Mr. President, our distinguished Deputy Majority Leader would like to ask just a few questions to the proponent of the manifestation, Senator...
Senator Reso Ontiveros is recognized.
Salamat po, Mr. President. Maribang magtanong ng ilang clarificatory questions sa good gentleman?
Yes, willingly to the senator from Panay Island in the Republic of the Philippines.
Salamat po, Mr. President. Kung talagang faithfully sinusunod ng Land Bank 'yung mga applicable banking laws sa isyung iniimbestiga natin sa Blue Ribbon Committee, ano sana dapat ang kanilang ginawa, Mr. President?
Well, under the AMLA law, they are mandated to report suspicious transactions, number one. I understand they probably did it, but here comes now AMLA. What did they do with the suspicious transaction report? Kung ito ay galing sa DPWH, hindi ba dapat sana ay tinawagan nila ang Land Bank at alamin ang detalye? At hindi ba sana, kung hindi tumawag ang AMLA, ay tumawag ang Land Bank sa AMLA? Paano ba naming, ano ba dapat gawin dito? 457 million cash ang winidro galing sa pondo ng DPWH. So, may mga paraan na pwedeng kumilos. At kung nakita ng AMLA, my understanding is that if these suspicious transactions coming from public works accounts revealed that there could be or may be a predicate crime of graft and corruption, and therefore, this is money being laundered or money being squandered, eh, bakit hindi nagsampa ng kaso, for example?
Salamat, Mr. President. And lastly, sinabi po nila sa kanilang statement na they faithfully and strictly complied with. So, good gentleman, kung strictly talaga, paano sila dapat kumilos kung totoong strictly sila tumupad sa mga batas?
At ang implikasyon nun, kung yun ang ibig sabihin ng strictly at faithfully, eh, di pwedeng ulit-ulitin 'yung magbidro ng 457 million sa loob ng dalawang araw? Is that what they're trying to say in this case? Hindi namang po siguro. And that's why, you know, I find it very disturbing, to say the least, that they would say after... Maybe they are afraid of liabilities? Maybe they are afraid that they may have had negligent behavior or conduct, and therefore would not want to own up? But now is the time to own up? Now is the time to have the truth out? Kung sila ay nagkulang, amini nilang nagkulang sila para hindi na maulit ito? Pero kung sasabihin nilang, "We followed strictly all regulations," allow me to quote very quickly.
Yes, Mr. President.
"These funds are legitimate government allocations, not private or unverified sources. Land Bank or any other financial institution has no legal authority to block or question duly appropriated government disbursements." This is all very legalese. And if we're going to use, you know, legalese language in order to gloss over the fact that no matter how you look at it, two days' cash transactions, 457 million pesos, how can that in any way be unsuspicious or regular?
And I take note, Mr. President, galing pa sa isang abogado na pinapaalalahanan tayong lahat, huwag tayong palimita sa legalese lamang. So, huli-huli, Mr. President, so may nakikita na po ba ang good gentleman na mga applicable laws na bukod sa, of course, kabuaang committee reports sa Blue Ribbon, pero particular dito sa statement ng Land Bank, applicable laws na malamang kailangang amiyandahan para talagang mabigyang daan ang faithful at strict compliance ng ating mga government banks sa ganitong mga usapin?
Well, immediately, I would like to think, government banks cannot be treated the same way as private banks, especially when it comes to precisely public interest involved in the amounts, in the accounts of government agencies. So there, there has to be a different set of rules and regulations covering government banks, such as the Land Bank of the Philippines or the DBP. Now, as to the specifics, as to what these provisions of law, amending the AMLA perhaps, is concerned, we can look into that. But clearly, we cannot allow government banking institutions to have the same set of rules and regulations as we would have private banking entities and corporations.
Marami salamat, good gentleman, at Mr. President. Totoong dapat ang mga government entities ay higit pa na accountable, no? Of course, there's accountability from private sector, civil society, pero kapantay at higit pa don mula sa mga government institutions. Marami salamat po.
Marami salamat, and thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Majority Leader.
Yes, our distinguished colleague Senator Rafi Tulfo would like to recognize.
Rafi Tulfo, the Senator Rafi Tulfo is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President, with the good senator from Pampanga. Allow me to ask one question.
Yes, willingly to the gentleman from Isabela and...
Isabela and Dabo.
And Dabo.
Mr. President, thank you. One, just one question, Mr. President. According to report, most land banks paratiropong kinukulang ng cash dahil malakas ang palabas na cash flow. And sabi ng mga kakilala, kakilala ko, marami sa atin na kaalam ito, to avoid having to request from BSP cash supply, they tap other nearby banks for cash supply assistance. What regulation, regulatory measures ang meron ang BSP para hindi na sila malusutan? Ahwer po kayo dito, Mr. President? Itong nangyari na palaging nagkukulang ng cash?
Narinig ko rin yan. Narinig ko rin yan. If I'm not mistaken, just recently, the Banco Central issued a memorandum circular na ipinagbabawal na ang cash releases. If it's more than half a million pesos, dapat checkin na ata, no? And they did that after the first, or the hearing, or the second, or the third hearing of the Blue Ribbon Committee. Eh, pwede namang pala. Kaya namang palang gawin magissue ng ganong klaseng circular para mahigpitan pa itong pagrelease ng cash transactions ng government banks.
Hindi kaya, Mr. President, kaya kinukulang ng cash ang mga land bank dahil dito po nagbidro 'yung kanina ng contractor, mga taga DPWH, bulto-bulto na pera.
Well, basa dun sa laysay ni... Well, basa dun sa laysay ni Miss Sally Santos, yun ang nangyari. Sinabi niya ay idiniposito sa kanyang account ng DPWH at ang utos ay i-withdraw at dalhin sa mga, sa district engineer. In fact, ang pagka, if I recall correctly, 'yung cash na nakita dun sa mga larawan, sa mga picture, 'yung limpak-limpak na salapi na nakapatong dun sa lamesa, ay galing yun sa land bank, kawi-withdraw at diniliver nga dito sa opisina, nung kung saan nilapag ng Public Works District Engineer 'yung pera.
Cash. Maraming salamat po, Mr. President, that's all. Thank you po.
Thank you, Mr. President, thank you, Senator Rafi Tulfo.
Majority Leader.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, we refer the speech, I move to refer the speech of the good gentleman to the Committee on Banks and Financial Institutions to include all interpolations as well.
Any objection? Hearing none. The manifestation speech of Senator Pangilin has referred to the Committee on Banks.
May I recognize Mr. President, Senator Jingo Estrada?
Senator Jingo Estrada is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, just an inquiry, Mr. President. I was tasked by my fellow minority senators. Since last week during our last session, if my memory serves me right, last Wednesday, we discussed the twin resolutions. The resolution filed by Senator Alan Peter Caetano and the other resolution filed by three senators, Senators De La Rosa, Padilla, and Bongo regarding the sense of the Senate with regard to the House arrest of former President Rodrigo Duterte. And we agreed during the last, last week's hearing that it will be discussed during the All Senators' caucus which happened yesterday. May I know the status of the twin resolutions, Mr. President?
Mr. President, with the information, for the information of the body, we did have an all-member caucus, but the minority was not there, only Senator Padilla was there. But it's not their fault, Mr. President. Dumating po si Vice President Rodrigo Duterte, so they were, of course, accommodating and hosting Madam Vice President's office nila. But so the status, we were not able to discuss it lengthy and fully because of, yeah, we didn't have the sponsors of these measures in the all-members' caucus yesterday. Pero nandito po tayo, for the record, nandito po tayo, regiintay sa lounge. So if the good gentleman would not want, maybe after this, we can have a, we can suspend after the three resolutions and discuss it.
We are more than willing to discuss it, Mr. President.
Okay. So yun na lang po, Mr. President, we can discuss it later on after the business of the day.
Yes, if the, if the body so desires, we can conduct a caucus after the business at hand.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, we have three, we have two, three items of the day. We have two resolutions, simple resolutions, and one ratification that hopefully we can approve on second reading. But for the two resolutions, we have an additional reference of business, so I move for the additional reference of business, Mr. President, so we can take up the resolutions.
The additional, is it contained in the additional reference of business? Majority Leader.
Yes, sir.
You, you need sixteen votes for that particular...
Bukas pa po 'yung ratification for the second reading lang.
Ah, okay, okay.
But I believe the gentleman from, who have, ah, sorry, who have Asia, Camarines Norte, and Mindanao would like to be recognized.
Senator Robin Padilla is recognized.
Marami salamat po, Ginong Pangulo, at sa ating Pinunong Mayorya. Gusto ko lamang pong sundan 'yung kahilingan po ng ating mahal na kapatid at Senator Jingo Estrada. Patungkol po sa kahilingan namin, sa resolusyon po namin, patungkol po kay dating Pangulo Rodrigo Rova Duterte. At gusto ko lamang din pong kunin po ang atensyon ng ating mga kasama na kami po kasi ay nangangamba kasi meron pong mga usap-usapan na 'yung dati pong senator na si Antonio Trillanes ay nagpunta daw po sa The Hague. At ang pinaniniwalaan po ng karamihan ay siya po ay nagpunta mismo sa kulungan ni dating Pangulong Rodrigo Rova Duterte. Nais lang po, sana namin itong malinawan dahil matagal po akong nakulong sa bilibid. Hindi po kailan man na meron pong pupunta na tao na hindi mo gustong makita. Ay yoon po eh, tatanungin ka muna ng gwardya kung gusto mo bang makita itong taong ito. Yung lamang po, gusto lamang po naming malinawan kasi meron na pong matinding sakit si, si Tatay Digong. Sa kasalukuyan po eh, siya po ay meron ng tinatawag nating early signs of dementia. Kaya sana lang po, malinawan po namin to. Maraming salamat po, Ginong Pangulo.
Majority Leader.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. We take note of the manifestation, very good colleague. So, Mr. President, I move that we proceed with the reference of business, additional reference of business.
The secretary will proceed with the reference of business.
Additional reference of business, bills on first reading, Senate Number 1419, Anac Consolidating All Performance Measurement Tools and Reward System for Our Local Government Units by Institutionalizing Culture of Meritocracy in the Philippines, Amending Certain Provisions of RA 11292, the Seal of Good Local Governance Act of 2019 and for Other Purposes, Senator Villar M.
Refer to the Committee on Local Government and Finance.
Senate Number 1420, Anac Mandating the Inclusion of Social Awareness and Social Responsibilities as Part of the Curriculum in All Senior High Schools, Senator Villar M.
Refer to the Committee on Basic Education.
Senate Number 1421, Anac Mandating the Integration of the National Building Code of the Philippines under RA 6541, Anak to Ordain and Institute a National Building Code of the Philippines as a major subject in the curriculum of the Bachelor of Science Degree Programs in Civil Engineering, Mechanical Engineering, Electrical Engineering, Sanitary Engineering, Electronic Engineering and Architecture, and its inclusion as a topic in the licensure examinations for this profession, Senator Villar M.
To the Committees on Higher Education and Civil Service.
Senate Number 1422, Anak Promoting Integrated Urban Agriculture in Urban Areas Nationwide to Address Food Security and Appropriating Fund Therefore, Senator Villar M.
To the Committees on Agriculture and Finance.
Senate Number 1423, Anak Establishing Nursing Homes for Senior Citizens at the Provincial and City Levels, Providing for Funding, Setting Standards, Ensuring Personal Training, Promoting Community Participation and for Other Purposes, Senator Ontiveros.
To the Committees on Social Justice, Local Government and Finance.
Senate Number 1424, Anak Integrating the Study of West Philippine Sea in the Curricula of All Public and Private Basic Educational Institutions, Senator Estrada.
To the Committees on Basic Education and Finance.
Senate Number 1426, Anak Establishing the Philippine Professional Standards and Quality Assurance Systems, Senator Legarda.
To the Committees on Higher Education and Civil Service.
Senate Number 1427, Anak Strengthening the Commission on Higher Education, Repealing for the Purpose RA 7722, the Higher Education Act of 1994, Senator Legarda.
To the Committees on Higher Education, Ways and Means and Finance.
Resolutions, Propose Senate Resolution 138, Congratulating and Commanding Filipino-American Singer Jessica Sanchez for Winning America's Got Talent Season 20, the first contestant of Filipino descent to win the competition, Senator Estrada.
To the Committee on Rules.
Propose Senate Resolution 140, Expressing the Sense of the Senate and Celebrating the Robust Interparliamentary Relations Between the Senate of the Philippines and the National Assembly of Hungary, and Honoring the Steadfast Leadership of Its Distinguished Speaker, the Honorable Laszlo Kovács, Senator Zubiri.
To the Committee on Rules. Majority Leader.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I move that we consider Propose Resolution Number 140. This is a resolution honoring Philippines-Hungarian, Hungarian parliamentary ties and Speaker Laszlo Kovács. I so move, Mr. President.
Is there objection? Hearing none. The consideration of proposed Senate Resolution 140 is in order. Secretary, we is directed to read the title of the resolution.
Resolution Expressing the Sense of the Senate and Celebrating the Robust Interparliamentary Relations Between the Senate of the Philippines and the National Assembly of Hungary, and Honoring the Steadfast Leadership of Its Distinguished Speaker, the Honorable Laszlo Kovács.
Mr. President, may I be recognized to sponsor the measure, please?
You may do so. You proceed, the Majority Leader.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Siguro ma, kasama ko po dito sa ating senado ay nagtataka bakit po natin in honor ang ating sama at pagkakaibigan ng Hungary and Hungarian Parliament is also because we're going to receive the Hungarian speaker, which is the number three. I think he's your co-equal, Mr. President, they only have a single parliament in Hungary, but he's also third in rank and line of succession in Hungary, and he'll be visiting us, I believe, on October 15. So that's why we are hopefully being able to pass this resolution and be giving it to him. And as a fact, Mr. President, Hungary has always been a good friend of the Philippines, particularly since our establishment of diplomatic relations fifty-two years ago. Since then, Hungary has championed us in matters regarding the European Union. As a matter of fact, when we pushed for our status as priority beneficiary of the General Scheme of Preferences, or GSP, and our ongoing relation, our ongoing negotiations for free trade agreement, it is Hungary that's in the forefront of pushing for these two measures to be approved by the European Union Parliament. Hungary has also been a constant, has also been constant in her support for our country's fair share in the global landscape, such as our maritime rights under the international law, as well as our bid for membership with the United Nations Security Council and the United Nations Commission on International Trade. The close friendship between our two countries is perhaps best exemplified through our ties with the Parliament's Hungary-Philippines Friendship Group headed by their Deputy Speaker, who's a dear friend of mine, Mr. President, Isvatan Jakob. And he's the president, I happen to be the counterpart, I happen to be the president of the Philippine-Hungary Friendship Group. When we visited last October 2023, they graciously welcomed our delegation in 2023 as well as 2020, as early as 2029, of which time we were hosted by this previous one by the national speaker himself, Laszlo Kovács, along with Deputy Speaker Jakob. In turn, we've had the honor of welcoming friends from the Hungarian National Assembly in November 2021, led by Deputy Speaker Jakob, and in January of this year, led by Committee on Foreign Affairs Chairperson Zolt Nemeth. And again, this October, a Speaker Kovács leads an official visit to the Philippines. These exchanges have been wonderfully productive and have yielded stronger partnerships in agriculture, education, healthcare, and disaster management. As an agriculturist myself, I have to thank Hungary for being extremely generous with their expertise in agriculture and aquaculture technology, to our great benefit, Mr. President. Indeed, one of the highlights of our 2023 visit to Hungary was getting to sit down with the heads of Hungarian universities, the Hungarian University of Agriculture and Life Sciences or MATE. This is their equivalent of the University of the Philippines, Dos Banios, which dedicates thirty-five slots for Filipino scholars every year. And many of our best and brightest are getting their education in Hungary. As a matter of fact, Mr. President, my Chief of Staff, Attorney Elisa Makapayag, is a graduate of Hungarian education for her masters. And they're bringing all that knowledge back home to help us build stronger agricultural, stronger agricultural sector and more food secure, more food secure, security for the future of our Filipinos. To top that, during our meeting with the Hungarian Cabinet officials in 2023, we learned that they have allotted twenty thousand jobs to Filipino workers in their agricultural and IT industries. Let me repeat that, Mr. President, Hungary allotted twenty thousand Filipino jobs in their agricultural and IT industries. They love the Filipinos in Hungary because Hungary happens to be also a very Catholic country. Many people don't know that, that they're quite religious, they believe in family values. Kaya pagpunta po ng ating mga kababayan dun sa Hungary, fit na fit po sila sa sistema at sa kultura ng mga Hungarian. So that's why they love the Filipinos. We're the only country that they've given that large of allotment of workers. Hungary has truly given us their full support from education to employment, and I have every faith that the upcoming visit of the delegation led by Speaker Kovács will further strengthen the ties between our two countries, built upon fifty-two years of friendship, and building towards an even more robust future of bilateral cooperation. To celebrate this friendship, we'll be presenting the Senate Resolution to Speaker Kovács during his parliamentary visit here in the Senate on October 15. In line with this, I would like to invite all our colleagues to a luncheon reception on the same day for the entire Hungarian delegation. So once again, Mr. President, marami salamat.
Thank you. Majority Leader, are there any, any interpolations?
There are no interpolations, Mr. President, just a quick amendment to the resolution.
Therefore, I will entertain a motion to open the period of amendments.
Yeah, we can close the period of amend, to close the period of interpolations, Mr. President.
Period of interpolations is closed, the period of amendments open.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. President, just on the second where asked closed to delete, and I quote, "and the United Nations Commission on International Trade," I, close quote, I so move, Mr. President.
Any objection? Hearing none, amended, disapproved.
There being no other amendments, move to close the period of amendments.
Any objection? Hearing none, period of amendments closed.
Mr. President, with that, I move to adopt Senate Resolution Number 140, subject to style, I so move.
Any objection? Hearing none. PS Resolution 140 is hereby approved.
May I request that all members be made cosponsor, Mr. President?
Hearing no objection, therefore, we are making all the members present as co-authors or cosponsors, co-authors of the measure.
And we have another resolution, Mr. President. Mr. President, I move that we consider Propose Senate Resolution Number 128. This is a resolution commemorating the one hundred fifteenth, one hundred fifteenth birthday anniversary of Wenceslaw Vincents, I so move, Mr. President.
Any objection? Hearing none, consideration of PS 128 is approved. Majority Leader.
I will ask the secretary, Mr. President, to read. I move that, I move that we consider Propose Senate Resolution and ask the secretary to read.
Yes, the secretary will read the measure, will read the title of the measure.
Resolution commemorating the one hundred fifteenth birthday anniversary of Wenceslaw Q. Vincents, and honoring him as the perpetual symbol of hope and youthful leadership in the struggle against poverty, inequality, and corruption.
Every time we approve this, I mean, every time we call on the resolution and we ask the secretary to read the title of the measure, it is inherent in that that the, the content of the resolution is hereby adopted, inserted into the records of the Senate. All right, Majority Leader.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I move that we recognize our distinguished colleague from Pampanga, Quezon City, and Cavite, no other than Senator Francis Kiko Pangilinan to sponsor the measure.
Senator Francis Pangilinan is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President, thank you, Majority Leader, distinguished colleagues. I rise to sponsor Senate Resolution Number 128 to commemorate the one hundred fifteenth birth anniversary of Wenceslaw Vincents. Before I proceed, Mr. President, I take to place on record that the following are here with us as members of the family of Wenceslaw Q. Vincents from Camarines Norte, namely Councillor Wenceslaw Vincents III, Councillor Joseph Justin Vincents, and Mr. Jan Vincents de Guzman. Mr. President, colleagues, ladies, and gentlemen, it is with pride and pleasure that I rise before you today to sponsor Senate Resolution 128 and give tribute to World War II hero and martyr Wenceslaw Q. Vincents. Our resolution seeks to remember his birth and his life. Karangalan para sa akin ang sponsor ng Senate Resolution na ito na naglalayong gunitain ang ikalabing, ikaisandaan at labinglimang birth anniversary ni Wenceslaw Bintao Vincents dahil siya ang OG na aktibista. Aktibista bago pa ang World War II. Itinutur, itinituring ko rin siyang kapatid, hindi lamang sa aming kapatiran na Upsilon Sigma Phi sa pamantasan ng Pilipinas, kundi kapatid din sa pakikibaka. Yesterday, his hometown in Dan, now named after him, celebrated this happy occasion. Paglay ng kanyang bayan ang kanyang pangalan at alaala. Itong resolusyon ay para muling ipagdiwang ang diwa ng kanyang nakakabilib na buhay. in his very own life. He is a leader. Or as the words of the generation, Gen Z, he is fire. A valedictorian in high school, a good debater at UP Law, champion orator number three in exams. At the age of twenty-two, in his Malaysian identity, he was a member of all the Malaysian society that resisted the colonial regime. He is a leader. As I said earlier, I remember him as the father of activists in the Philippines. Because in the 1930s, students were trying to raise their wages and he was the first to come out of the class to learn how to do this. In the time when it was easier to speak, he was very brave to speak. During protests against flood controls, he was also a voice for those protesting. You can't speak quietly. You have to speak loudly. As the words of Bintao said, his wife said, "Don't fight." When the children of his family said, "If I stay silent, they will still come. If I kneel, our children will grow up slaves. It is better they remember their father stood, even if he must fall." Wenceslaus Bintao Vincenzo was also the youngest delegate in the 1934 Constitutional Convention. Later, he became governor of Camarines Sur and became assemblyman of the Lalawigan. When he was promoted to the chief of the National Assembly, he could go to Maynila, the center of the capangyarihan. Instead, he moved to Bayang to organize one of the first guerrilla in Luzon. He organized the students' groups, that had bolo, students' tents, and mangings that had big rifles. And he organized almost three thousand guerrilla forces in Kabikulan. He didn't have guns, he didn't have strong arms. As an example, he showed that he was very strong. He was the strongest of the arms. And because of his strength, he was the leader of the war. He was attacked, killed, wounded, beaten, and was beaten up by the soldiers. But he was brave. On 15th of July, 1942, at the age of thirty-one, before he was arrested, he said, "Don't be afraid. We will kill you for our country. One day, our children will be safe." On Wednesday, Vincenzo's Day, he remembered the day of this and the life of Bintao that activism is valued in Bayan, that the power is not about the book or the power, but sacrifice and service. That the freedom and good behavior is not given at any time. It has always been a victory or a battle. It is possible to ask, what is the news of one Filipino who lived in the 1930s and 1940s in our digital natives' generation of the new millennium? My answer is, "All." Because in the time, you can't change, you just pass away, or die, only the social media. No matter what, we need the strength, consensus, and brave people. Don't let them beat up the name of Bintao Vincenzo. We should stand up for our land, not just water, but also our heritage. Because we need to have our strength in our isolated communities, in our barangays, in our families, and also in the congress of the Senate. Wenceslaus Bintao Vincenzo is a brother of the governor of Bayani, even though he is a member of the party. He is always a fighter for the hope, for the freedom, for the strength of the generation. Like him, we should fight for the hardships, the injustice, and corruption that he has ruined our democracy. Now, we are, in our times, are also brave. In our day-to-day wars, we are alive, Wenceslaus Vincenzo. We are alive, Philippines. Thank you, Mr. President, and to our members in the Senate.
Mr. President, may the good gentlemen answer just one question from this representation. Mr. President, if you...
Willingly to our Majority Leader. Go ahead. We opened the period of interpellation. Go ahead.
Mr. President, I just want to ask, is there a law already recognizing Wenceslaus Vincenzo? Because if there's none, I would suggest that we pass a working holiday, but a law. There is?
There is a provincial ordinance, if I'm not mistaken, but there is no national law.
So if the good gentleman, Mr. President, would like to spearhead one, I would love to be a co-author of that law. I think we should recognize him for his efforts. He was martyred in World War II because of his belief in freedom and of democracy and his vigilance should be rewarded, not just by mere resolutions in the Senate, not just by mere provincial resolutions. We really need to take it. In fact, Mr. President, for the information of our colleagues, when he was killed, together with, together with him was his wife, two kids, two children, and his father. They were all killed by the Japanese invasion forces.
I visited Vincenzo in 1991, and the story goes that before he was killed, he was paraded on the streets. He was paraded on the streets of Vincenzo, which was, I'm not sure if it was Vincenzo before. I think it was Diet.
Yes, the members of the family, the grandson is here. And he confirms that the story, Mr. President.
I'm trying to recall the name of the mayor then, but that was 1991. I think the Wenceslaus Vincenzo III was not born yet. Anyway, I would be honored to be a co-author of this resolution, Your Honor. Senator Ping Laxon is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Majority Leader raised a very interesting question and manifestation. There is no law, even a proclamation or executive order, that declares a Filipino a national hero, even Dr. Jose Rizal and the others, by tradition only.
Yes.
Now, maybe we can initiate a legislative measure, establishing the parameters or classification on how to declare a Filipino to be a national hero. And I would suggest that Wenceslaus Vincenzo would be the first recipient of that law if ever it is passed. Because as you were sponsoring, as you were delivering your sponsorship speech, I was chatting with ChatGPT. You know, his exploits are really impressive. He was captured by the Japanese, very young, front com delegate at age twenty-four, 1935 Constitutional Convention. Then elected as governor, a member of the House of Representatives. And he was captured by the Japanese because he was the one who organized the uprising in Bicol.
That is correct.
The whole of Bicol region. He was tortured, but he refused to cooperate. So he was beheaded.
Yes.
Along with the other, as you said, members of the family. Very unfortunate, and what a waste. Because in his young life, he was beheaded at age thirty-one. He could have contributed a lot for our beloved Bayan, especially during the Japanese occupation. And even beyond that, had he not been beheaded. So maybe we can craft a legislative measure to make it work. What are the parameters? If we encounter these exploits by a Filipino patriot like Wenceslaus Vincenzo, at least we can do something to recognize their heroism. So I think we can work on that, Mr. President. So with that, thank you, Mr. President, for the opportunity.
Thank you, Senator Laxon. If I may just put on record also, Mr. President, this was a column of Mr. Romero, Segundo Romero, in the Philippine Daily Inquirer ten hours ago, so today. And if I may quote, "Born in 1910 in Indan, Camarines Norte, he became the UP Student Council Chairperson and editor of the Philippine Collegiate. He was a visionary, far-seeing, brilliant advocate for a pan-mali union, founded the Young Philippines, a political party of law students who insisted that the youth was not a waiting room, but a vanguard. At twenty-four, he was a delegate to the 1934 Constitutional Convention. At twenty-seven, he was governor of Camarines Norte. At twenty-nine, he was assemblyman. But the two tests came not in the halls of lawmaking, but in the forests of Bicol during World War II. And for the Japanese, neutralizing Vincenzo was essential. When he was captured in 1942, they offered him collaboration, helped pacify the resistance in exchange for his life, and he refused. And therefore, the Japanese retaliated by executing six members of his family: his father, Gabino, his wife, Liwaiwai, his sister, and two of his children. And an unborn child was lost with Liwaiwai. So she was pregnant at the time that she was killed. So clearly, the sacrifice of Wenceslaus Vincenzo and his family is worthy of...
Immeasurable.
Immeasurable and worthy of our, giving him the honor that he deserves. I therefore move that we, well, unless there are... Ah, yes, I understand the gentleman from Camarines Norte.
Senator Robin Badilla is recognized. By the way, when was Wenceslaus Vincenzo governor of Camarines Norte?
Norte, Norte, yes, correction.
Yes, Camarines Norte, okay. He was, what year was he governor?
The age of twenty-seven. So if he was born, well, 1910, so that would have been 1937, when he was governor.
All right, nineteen thirty-seven, yes. When I visited in 1991, the governor of Camarines Norte was the father of Senator Robin Badilla. And you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President, and to our members of the House. I just want to say thank you to our members of Bayani, the groups, Senator Kiko Pangilinan, to meet up with our members of Bayani in Camarines Norte. The entire province of Camarines Norte, along with the families of our members, I want to say thank you to you, to meet up with you and to be a part of this, in our plenary, so that it will be a big event for us to meet up. And that too, to our members of the Senate, Senator Panfilo Laxon, Senator Mig Subiri, and to our Senate President, Senatora Vicente Soto. Thank you all. One thing, the name of this person is important. Wenceslaus Vincenzo. As we meet up, our members, we meet up. His power is liberated. It is the end of the Camarines Norte in the war. And their weapons are just knives. They really don't have many arms. But on the strength, they trust in the war. Thank you again for all of you.
Mr. President, with the permission of the Majority Leader, I move that we approve Senate Resolution Number 128 and if the rest of the senators are willing to be co-authors.
Yes, but there are no interpellations, there are no amendments?
Yes, Mr. President, there's no interpellation from our members and no amendments as well, Mr. President. I move to adopt Senate Resolution Number 128 with all members of the Senate as co-authors, Mr. President.
Any objection? Hearing none, PS Resolution 128 is hereby adopted.
Mr. President, may we suspend for one minute so that we can just approach the family and have a picture. They would like to have a picture with us.
Session is suspended. Session is suspended. Session is suspended.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Just for the record, Senator Pia Caetano wishes to be made co-sponsor of Senate Resolution Number 140, which we already did, I think we made all members co-sponsor, together with the... But she would like that her cosponsoring speech be inserted into the record for PS Resolution Number 140. Senator Legarda as well, Mr. President, would like to insert her cosponsoring speech of PS Resolution 128 into the records, Mr. President.
So recorded, as manifested by the Majority Leader.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, we'd like to move to consider PS Resolution Number 139 under Committee Report Number 2, Mr. President.
Any objection? Hearing none. PS Resolution 139's consideration is in order.
Thank you, Mr. President. Having already been sponsored yesterday, we're now in the period of interpolation. Maybe we recognize Senator Rafi Tulfo to ask a few contradictory questions to our distinguished colleague, Senator Amy Marcos, Mr. President.
The sponsor, Senator Amy Marcos, is recognized and to interpolate, Senator Rafi Tulfo.
Thank you very much, Mr. President and Majority Leader. I'm happy to take any questions and answer to the best of my ability.
Are you pertaining to Senator Rafi Tulfo or Senator Erwin Tulfo?
They both look the same, Mr. President. My apologies. I thought it was Senator Erwin. May I ask for a minute's suspension to locate the interpreter?
No, Mr. President, it was me.
Senator Erwin Tulfo, Mr. President.
Senator Erwin Tulfo is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, distinguished colleagues, I rise today to manifest my support for the Senate's concurrence on Philippines-United States Letter of Agreement on Echotix Control and Law Enforcement. Since its inception in 2011 during this enduring partnership, has provided over $27 million to our country, resources that have significantly contributed to strengthening our justice system, enhancing the capacity of our law enforcement agencies, and advancing drug prevention programs. These initiatives have not only reinforced our institutions but also provided vital support in our continuing struggle against the menace of illegal drugs. At the same time, Mr. President, we must carefully examine the supposed reimbursement to the United States for tax exemptions granted under the letter of agreement a concern raised during the committee hearings on 11 September 2025. In addition, while we acknowledge this letter of agreement, we must ensure that from this point onward, the Department of Foreign Affairs submits treaties for Senate concurrence in a timely manner. We must ensure that our actions neither create and undo financial burden on our government nor set a precedent that may weaken the constitutional role of the Senate in concurring a treaty as enshrined under Article 7, Section 21 of the 1987 Constitution. With these considerations, Mr. President, I reiterate my support for the concurrence of this agreement, confident that it will continue to promote justice, law enforcement, and drug prevention, while also underscoring the importance of upholding our constitutional process. Mr. President, may the good lady from Ilocos Norte entertain some questions?
Certainly, Mr. President. Thank you very much. Senator Erwin Tulfo, the right Tulfo.
Madam, Mr. President, distinguished colleague, the question now is, what is the nature of the agreement entered into between the United States and the Philippines on Echotix Control and Law Enforcement of April 19, 2011? Does it fall under the category of an executive agreement? Or does it assume the character of a treaty?
Yes, as it turns out, the law is presently viewed as a treaty, hence it requires the concurrence of the Senate. When it was signed in 2011, it was assumed that it was a mere executive agreement and a simple bilateral arrangement, not requiring a treaty. However, as laid down, in fact, it turns out that specifically under "create" as well as "create more", it is in fact a treaty endowing the beneficiaries a tax exemption. And that is very clear and explicit under Section 32b5 of RA 12066, "create more", so that it is now necessary for us to concur in order to derive the benefits for PDEA, for the PNP, for DOJ, for DOH from the United States. They are also embarking upon a new project which requires a building and will entail quite a large expense in Palawan. And as a result, it is the first time they've actually invoked the tax exemption.
Mr. President, distinguished colleague, though I manifest my support for this Philippine-US Letter of Agreement, my question is, is the Philippines obliged to reimburse the United States in accordance with a tax exemption under the terms of the letter of agreement? Kasi po, madam Chair, alam na po natin medyo kulang tayo sa budget and kailangan po nating i-reimburse around $27 million? Medyo malaki-laki rin pong pera din po yun. I mean, $27 million na exemption sa ating bansa.
No. As a matter of fact, all the expenses and the donations and grants given by the United States previously were subject to tax, but we will no longer be required to refund the United States government of those taxes. But moving forward into the future, we will be required to provide the sums in tax paid by the US government by way of their tax exemption.
Thank you, distinguished colleague. Mr. President, maraming maraming salamat po. That's all.
Maraming salamat. Si Senator Tulfo po ang nagtiyaga. Maghimay nitong tratado kasama ko, kaya salamat po.
Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Majority Leader.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, no other member wishes to interpolate the measure. I move we close the period of interpolation.
Any objection? Hearing none. Period of interpolation is closed.
Mr. President, we'd like to ask the sponsor if there's any amendments?
No, there are no amendments, Majority Leader.
There are no amendments, therefore we close the period of amendments.
Yes. Mr. President, I move to approve on second reading. PS Resolution Number 139 under Committee Report Number 2. I so move.
Any objection? Hearing none. Proposed Senate Resolution 139 is hereby adopted, subject to style.
And then tomorrow, Mr. President, we'll do the third reading roll call vote because we need two thirds as this is being a treaty, Mr. President, for third reading.
All right. So we will entertain a motion to suspend consideration?
Yes, we move to suspend, Mr. President.
Any objection? Hearing none. Consideration of the measure suspended.
May I ask for a minute's suspension, Mr. President? One Senate minute.
I thought you wanted to go into a caucus.
Correct, Mr. President. So I move for a one-Senate-minute suspension.
Session suspended for one-Senate-minute.
I have Alan, so put my name in Alan.
Yes.
You asked the second year. The second year.